All right, I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. If everyone please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Okay, um, so some citizens' input, Kate?
Do you want to do action on minutes first?
Okay, we can do action on the minutes, that's right. Does anybody have anything they wish to correct on the minutes for the October 22nd meeting?
No, Mr. Chair.
Um, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the September-
October.
October 24th?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second meeting, I'm still getting my phone.
Second.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown is absent, Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinrom?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now, do we have any citizens' input, Kate?
Yes, we do, we received, um, we received a public, a citizens' input e-comment on, from Jenny Curtis, and it says, "Is public health going to announce that the mask mandate fees are now in effect? It needs to be made known to everyone, maybe even by mailers or flyers. More education on those flyers about COVID and masks would be nice, too. Not everyone has internet," and that is it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have another minute before we start our next, uh, item.
Welcome to your last meeting, Kate.
Thank you.
It's your last meeting, too, isn't it?
I'll sit here and watch the clock.
Stephanie?
Do we have, how many participants, participants do we have today, Jake?
We have 11 people in the Zoom room.
Uh, so there are, I, two individuals that I, um, that I'm not sure about, so I think
too public.
Okay. All right, it's 9:05. This is a public hearing on consideration of a parcel map extension, PMX 20-01, and reconsideration of a previously approved mitigated negative declaration, IS 18-01. The applicant is John Van Eck, proposing a three-year extension of time to an approved parcel map, PM 18-01, formerly subdivision SD 05-13, and minor modification map MMMM 17-01. The location is 36, uh, 3640 Lakeview Estates Drive, Kelseyville, and further described as APN 009-008-10.
Am I good to go?
All right. It's all yours.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners, Eric Porter, Associate Planner. Good morning. Um, I'm not going to get too far into this unless the Commission has any questions. Um, this was originally approved as a 16-lot subdivision back in 2006. File number was 05-13. Um, in 2011, the state, State of California imposed a water moratorium about connecting with the public water system. That created a real problem for Mr. Van Eck, so after some deliberation, he, um, decided to modify his decision back in 2017 to reduce the number of lots from 16 to four. That changed the nature of the application submittal, it became a parcel map instead of a full-blown subdivision. Uh, the Planning Commission agreed that he did not have the ability to connect to a public water system, and even though he was within 1,000 feet of, uh, it's called CSA 20, it's the water supplier for that area, the Planning Commission granted him the ability to share a well, and he has not drilled the well yet, to my knowledge. Um, the subdivision was, or the parcel map, rather, was due to expire in June of this year, and so in May of this year, he applied for this extension. Um, the reason it carried forward for so long between 2005 and now is largely due to, uh, governor mandates for extensions due to economic considerations in the state. And so there were a series of governor-sponsored extensions that carried the Van Eck parcel map through to this point in time, actually to 2017. So, County Code Chapter 17 handles subdivisions, and there's a portion in the County Code that allows for, I believe it's up to a five-year extension of the time. Um, Mr. Van Eck is requesting three years, we're supportive of it, given all the factors that are happening between COVID, the economy, the recessions, um, we're recommending that he be approved for a three-year extension. And so with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
No, it seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Okay, is, uh, is the applicant on Zoom and would like to speak? Jake?
I've sent a meet request to the, uh, two individuals in the Zoom room.
Okay. The Zoom room.
I'm new to this, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is John Van Eck, I, I see some of you guys, so, no, I have no other questions for you.
Okay, um, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. You know, it doesn't look like we have anybody in chambers that wishes to speak. Jake, you're not seeing any movement?
Uh, no, I'm not, I sent another, a meet request out to the Zoom floor.
Okay. All right, not seeing anybody make any moves, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. Did the board have any, any specific questions for John, or ready to, um, move forward?
I don't have any questions.
No questions.
Ready to go.
Does somebody wish to entertain a motion?
I guess this would be Eagles District.
He's not, he's not present for this meeting.
Right, right.
Somebody else want to jump in?
Mine or Christina's?
I can, um, I can do it. Give me one second. Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I move that the mitigated negative declaration, which was previously prepared for subdivision SD 05-13, and for minor modification of map MMU 17-01, does meet the requirements of Section 15162A of the CEQA guidelines, and that an additional environmental review is not necessary with the findings listed in the staff report dated October 15th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinrom?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Christina.
Um, in regards to the time extension, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve an extension of time for subdivision SD 05-13, and for minor modification of map MMMM 17-01, for a period of time, or excuse me, for a period of three years, with the findings listed in the staff report dated October 15th, 2020.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Thank you, John.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinrom?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the subdivision ordinance provides for a 15 calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applica, applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the 15th calendar day following the Commission's final determination.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, our next item is a public hearing on consideration of a major use permit, UP 19-07, and mitigated negative declaration, IS 19-12. The applicant is South Lake Farms, Chris Jennings, proposing 8A Type III outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation license consisting of 3,000, uh, 348,480 square feet of canopy, and located within 360,550 square feet of cultivation area. The location is 23942 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, and further described as APN 013-013-11.
Good morning, Victor.
Good morning. Yes, I do, should I pull that up there?
Jake, you there, um, we have, he has a PowerPoint, would it, do we just do share screen, or do you need to send an invite out?
Yeah, so you did a share screen, let me just give that person, co-host, okay, you should be able to share the screen now.
Okay.
And did you have the PowerPoint?
I have it in the E-drive.
Okay, so, uh, you are gonna have to find the E-drive there.
That's not there.
Here, let me, uh, I'm gonna send a, an assistance request to that computer so I could help out.
Okay. Yeah, I can see, okay, but I can't see the-
Okay, I think, uh, I think the E is your share, so you should be good now.
Awesome.
Oh, actually, let's, uh-
Okay. Okay, we ready?
So, uh, will you minimize that real quick, though?
This?
Yeah, yeah, we have to.
Okay.
All right. And now you should be able to begin the slideshow.
Okay, cool. Thanks, Jake.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right, um, so good morning, everybody, uh, I'm just gonna move my mask down a little bit so you guys could hear me clearly. Um, so I'll go ahead and start, my name is Victor Fernandez, I'm an assistant planner here at the Community Development Department, um, in the Planning Division. Today on the agenda, um, as it was already described, uh, I'll be presenting a major use permit for South Lake Farms, uh, the applicant is Chris Jennings, uh, so I'll go ahead and get started. So what I'll be going over today is a few items, first I'll talk about the permit request, I'll be explaining a little bit, um, in regards to the project proposal, and then, um, kinda tying that in with the project description as well, and then describing the site, going over our project analysis, and then finally our recommendations and the conditions that we have proposed for the project. So to kick things off, the applicant seeks approval of a major use permit to cultivate 348,480 square feet of outdoor cannabis cultivation, um, located in a total of 360,550 square feet, um, of cultivation area. So the total proposed canopy size is, um, as I mentioned before, the 348,048, which is approximately 4.4% uh, total area to be cultivated in relation to the parcel size. Um, so on the right-hand side, right there, I apologize, I tried to get it to render clearly for the presentation, um, but it's the project parcel, um, it's, it's outlined in blue right there, as you can see, kind of the, that shaped parcel. Um, so before talking about, a little bit about the license types, I do want to give a little bit more in-depth, uh, description. Um, so the cultivation area will be conducted in an enclosed area secured by a six-foot-high fence. The proposed cultivation method is an above-ground, inorganic soil mixture fabric pots, or smart pots, um, so there will be minimum ground disturbance on the site, um, as well. Uh, the applicant does have, um, a 1,000,000-square-foot agricultural exempt drying storage set, um, so part is the proposal, it will only be used for storage only and, um, to dry the plants in there. Um, so workers will not be, um, in there working, they'll just be in there to, to store the product. Um, the applicant also proposes a 5,000-gallon water tank, 11 employee parking spaces, and according to the application, um, the applicant proposes the hours of operation Monday through Sunday, 5:00 to 7:00 PM. I want to dive in a little bit into the water, uh, water sources for this project, uh, the operation will be using an existing onsite well, uh, the applicant did provide a well completion report, um, and well test that equals approximately 24 gallons per minute. Um, the water from the well will be pumped via underground PVC piping to the 5,000-gallon water storage tank, once that has reached the water tank, then it will be gravity, gravity fed, uh, to underground PVC piping to the cultivation area. So in regards to the water usage, um, according to the application package, the applicant proposes to use approximately 949,000 gallons per year. The project site with the existing 24 gallons per minute well translates to approximately 15,159,327 gallons per year, um, so we can see it's kind, the, that the water, the well has significant water for the proposed operation.
Did, uh, did they submit any, uh, drawdown tests that were, that were conducted on the well to prove that it, it can withstand that?
Yeah, so, um, the applicant initially submitted a well completion report that drew down 100 gallons per minute, they did provide a well pump test report, um, from a private drilling company, and on those documents that they submitted to the county, they did, um, identify with the tell, the ping test that it draws 24 gallons per minute.
Then that's 24 hours a day, seven days a week for six months, or as long as they're gonna be?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So in regards to the water usage, um, it calc, with the 24 gallons per minute, um, in relation to the proposed water usage, it's gonna be approximately 6.2% of full capacity being used. So I'll go ahead and talk about the license types a little bit, um, as I mentioned before, uh, the applicant will be applying for A, A Type III licenses, uh, the property is approximately 181 acres, so staff has confirmed that the applicant has sufficient acreage to apply for the eight, um, eight A Type III licenses. And the site is approximately 3.9 miles east from a community growth boundary, so it is in compliance with, um, the minimum requirements. So just to touch a little bit on the recommendation, um, staff is recommending approval of major use permit, UP 19-07, uh, with several conditions outlined in full in the staff report, and as well in the conditions of approval attachment. So I'll go ahead and talk a bit, um, about the site itself, um, so first things first, the property is located off of Jerusalem Grade Road, um, there is a shared easement, um, off of Jerusalem Grade Road, uh, which the applicant uses to access, access the parcel. The, as I mentioned before, the parcel is approximately 181 acres in size, and is zoned rural lands, which supports the commercial cannabis cultivation licenses. Um, I wanted to bring it up in this section here, uh, there was public concerns, um, in regards to the site itself, um, I've attached those in the agency comments attachment, um, we, uh, in the agency comments attachment, you can see I have, have addressed, um, his concerns, there was a final comment that had concerns in regards to the easement, um, and some concerns with access, uh, between two private owners, um, so in regards to that, since it is a private, um, shared easement, um, those concerns will need to be addressed between the two private property owners, um, and I just wanted to bring that up now. So, moving on, again, the proposed canopy size is 348,480 square feet, which is 4.4% total to be cultivated. I want to apologize again here, I didn't, I couldn't get it to render so it could be clearly, um, but the site plan is in the attachments, if you would like to take a look at it, I just thought I would put it in here, just in case the public wanted, um, to see it. So in regards to the project analysis, uh, staff reviewed that the project is concurrent, um, with the Lake County General Plan, the Middletown Area Plan, and the zoning ordinance as well, uh, staff determined that the project is consistent with those above plans and policies, and commercial cannabis cultivation is a permitted use in the rural lands district upon issuance of a use permit. So here's, um, a vicinity map, so you can get an idea, um, of what the site looks like, I've identified where the cultivation area will be with that yellow arrow on the lower left-hand side, um, so the proposed use is consistent with the land use, um, the site itself is relatively steep, but the cultivation area where the applicant proposes to cultivate is, is flat, um, so it has a 0 to 10% grade, um, where the cultivation will occur, and again, uh, it is not located within a community growth boundary. Um, so if we take a look at that, um, vicinity map there, kind of to the eastern side and the southeastern side, there's two neighboring parcels that are zoned as open space, um, so previously with our ordinance, there was a minimum requirement of 1,000 feet from public lands, um, however, recently, um, I believe, um, I believe in May 12th of this year, there was an ordinance amendment that passed through the Board of Supervisors, and, um, it was ordinance 3096, which created a more defined, um, definition of what falls under public lands. So for example, public lands can include like hiking trails, um, public parks, areas where people might go to like retreat, um, where public might be, but in this case, those neighboring parcels, um, are vacant, and, uh, staff did conduct a site visit, and we identified that there didn't seem to be any, um, any, um, any evidence of public being, um, on those parcels. So here are some site pictures from when staff did conduct a site visit. So this is the entrance to the site, and I know it kind of looks a little bit dark, um, there, this is kind of going into the cultivation area itself, um, thank you. So maybe that can help to see it a little bit more clear, I do have more photos, though, so, um, you'll be able to see, um, but when we conducted a site visit, um, the code enforcement division, uh, we have a representative on that team that, um, is a specialist in regards to the 4290 requirements, um, in regards to road access, so since this project is an all-outdoor grow, um, the code enforcement, um, representative identified that, um, the project is exempt from 4290 road standards due to it being an exclusive all-outdoor grow. So before, um, I move into this, I do want to mention that the applicant did receive an early activation permit, so that's why you'll be seeing plants already onsite, um, but this is a photo looking towards the cultivation site, as you can see, he's growing above ground in pots, and he currently has the irrigation system above ground for minimum, minimal ground disturbance. And then this is kind of, um, as you may remember, the, the property is pretty steep, uh, towards the northern end, so we went ahead, um, and went out on the site, the applicant allowed us to get, um, up a little bit higher to get a view, a better view of the cultivation area, so as you can see, that area is where they're cultivating, and I want to identify that the applicant has, um, with his proposal, um, identified that they'll be doing best management practices for erosion control and stormwater runoff. If you look kind of to the right-hand side of the site photo, uh, you can see that he already has, um, implemented some BMPs, which is installing some straw, uh, to, um, limit erosion, uh, erosion and stormwater runoff.
Hey, Victor?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Hess, are you, was that photograph taken from a road, or just on the property?
So-
I'm wondering about how visible this might be from a road.
So this photograph that was taken here is from the northern end of his property, so we were still located on his property.
Hmm.
And, um, the road, Jerusalem Grade Road is where, from that, the way, the angle that photo was taken, Jerusalem Grade Road is located, um, that way, which the photo was taken, so it would be south from that.
Got it, thanks.
Yeah, of course. So I want to talk a little bit about the California Environmental Quality Act, um, for this project, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared, um, the project went through an extensive, uh, CEQA analysis, um, so, in attachment four of the proposed conditions of approval, we have outlined mitigations, um, that the applicant has agreed to comply with, and, um, attachment six is the initial study document as well. Um, so with the mitigations proposed, staff has determined that all the impacts can be mitigated and reduced to less than significant. So there are certain findings that need to be met, um, to recommend approval for the project, um, as you can see, I've outlined the major use permit, uh, findings in Article 51 on the left-hand side, and then the cannabis, um, commercial cannabis cultivation findings that need to be met, um, in reference to Article 27 on the right. Um, so staff has determined that the proposed project complies with the ma, major use permit findings, as well as the Article 27 findings that are required. So staff is recommending approval of major use permit, UP 19-07, the staff report fully outlines the conditions that staff has implemented as part of the project in attachment four. Some of the conditions, uh, require, uh, dust pa, mitigations for dust palliatives, equipment requirements, access and parking requirements, um, hazardous material requirements, um, requiring the applicant to have them stored and contained, um, water quality requirements, um, and cultural resources, um, this is a great, um, spot to bring, bring this information up, uh, the tribe, Middletown Rancheria, went ahead and, um, submitted a comments to the, our department, they had some concerns, but, um, after working with the tribe and working with the applicant, uh, Middletown Rancheria has determined that they are comfortable with the project moving forward due to the minimum ground disturbance. And then that concludes my presentation, and if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any.
Thank you, Victor.
Thank you.
Um, full disclosure, I did go and do a site visit, um, between, um, I forgot what I was gonna say, it'll come back to me, I'm waking up, they turned on the lights, and I'm like, I don't know, just give me a minute, but I did, I did do a site visit.
Okay, does anybody else have any, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a, a very minor comment, it has nothing to do with the quality of, of the report we were just given, um, Mr. Ellis, the neighbor who has some issues about the easement, et cetera, if those, if that kind of correspondence could be treated as a green sheet rather than embedded in the agency comments, um, it would be easier to isolate, and I didn't discover that until at the very end, because I assumed- because I assumed everything in there was an agency comment. Normally, Mr. Ellis's stuff, we would treat as a green sheet. But that's my only comment.
Do you want to? Thank you, John. Does anybody else have? Have any questions or comments? Okay, see none. We'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. There's some people in the audience. Nobody looks like they want to get up and speak.
Nobody?
Okay. Are you the applicant's?
I am.
Okay. So we do have the applicant here. If anyone had any questions for the applicant. All right. Jake? Nobody from, from the virtual room?
Uh, yeah. So I sent out a unmute request. If anybody in the Zoom room would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Nobody's making any move, Jake?
Does not look like it.
Okay. Go ahead and close public comment. Did, Victor, did you see this letter from Pete Ellis?
Yeah, so if.
Was that addressed?
Yeah. So if I could clarify a little bit, in those agency comments, you can see that there was communication between myself and Pete, Pete Ellis. He had some concerns and it seemed like I addressed his concerns, but that final one at the top was another concern he, he had. We received these comments when we sent out the initial study for legal noticing. So it isn't a recent comment that was submitted like just recently prior to the meeting. So that's why I included it in the agency comments attachment rather as a green sheet.
Okay. So I was just looking at it. There's some concerns about the property lines and surveying and that kind of stuff. Has that been addressed then, Victor?
Yeah. So what we utilize is our county records to determine the property line, property line setbacks. The applicant is compliant in regards to the cultivation operation for the setbacks.
Was a surveyor used to certify the lines or did you guys just kind of use the GIS site?
So we use the GIS as well as the Assessor Parcel Mapbooks to identify the setback requirements. I think from those comments, there was, there was concerns, concerns for, for other related material being not within the setbacks. I don't think he identified it for the cultivation area. And the site plan was also supplied by the applicant.
And the site plan is, has the official survey markers and everything on it, correct? I'm just asking because I want to make sure that, you know, that this person's, apparently this is a neighbor and that they're.
Right.
You know? Does the applicant wish to address any of this possibly? Are you guys okay with hearing from the applicant on this?
Sure.
What?
Make sure he states his name.
I still can't hear you, Christina.
Nothing. I was gonna tell him, make sure he states his name.
Yes, of course.
Chris Jennings. So when I bought the property several years ago, Pete was my neighbor at that point. And he still is and hopefully one day can own that property. But I found a pin and the pin was further closer towards his property. And then Pete wants to go off the GIS and my surveyors. And as we all know, you never go off the GIS, off the satellites because things can be 100 feet off. So as a good neighbor, just to not create any friction, and this was, mind you, years ago, I said, okay, if you feel that the marker is down here halfway in my gate, then we'll call this the property line for the time being. Because I was, I'd cleared out where I'd find the pin in the ground, cleared out a property line, basically gave him a fire break. Drew some great fire. Me doing that saved his house from catching on fire. Wanted to move it over. So if you look at the property line between me and him, there's like four cuts between us. And they're slowly going back towards me. So then I finally disagreed. Fine, we'll put it right here. It's funny because I knew, I figured this day would come at some point with him because we've always had these talks where there's a fence line on his property and a fence line on the easement. And everything's so far over away from that. I'm moving slowly away from his property more and more. So I, you know, just try to be neighborly and everything and I tell him one day, well, get a surveyor out here and survey it and, and go from there. So I feel as if I'm going off the GIS, which is putting it, the property line, I don't think in the correct position, further closest towards me. So even from the cultivation to his home from there, it's, you know, I'm 100 foot setback from that line, which I still feel is 100 feet closer towards him. And then plus the other probably three or so hundred feet from that property line to his house. So there's a good, probably 400 feet, maybe 500 feet or more from where the garden's at towards his home. And yeah, Dan, Dan Martinez, focal point surveying, this is all my surveying. I guess got done emailing him last week. He's going to come up. We're going to do the west line, record it with the county. So it's set in stone and, and counties go from there. But I don't think there's an issue. He's always addressed it with me. When I was going to put a fence up, he's like, well, I'm losing out on 2,000 square feet of property. I'm like, 2,000 square feet? That's a lot, that's a lot of property on 40 acres. So let's, let's move it over then, you know? And whenever we get a surveyor, if you want to contest it, get your own surveyor. And I'm going to bring in probably the top surveyor in the area or one of the top surveyors in there. It's been doing it longer than, you know, than I've been alive and go that route. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you, you're basically working it out with the neighbor one way or the other?
Totally. And it's, you know, I'm, I'm an open book, you know? It's like, if you need any help, let me know. You know, there's a little pump, stop working for the creek he's pulling water off of and I let him use my solar pump. And it's just, it's always an open book. It's like, you know, you need anything, let me know, tell me. Guess the other day the music was a little too loud. I guess at eight in the morning. So, you know, we're all harvesting right now. And I was like, okay, we'll, we'll turn the music down. Sorry. We'll adhere nine to five or something. But yeah, he's also trying to sell his property for cannabis cultivation. So it baffles me that people complain about what I'm doing when they're trying to do the same exact thing.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Would anybody like to entertain a motion or would we just like to adjourn and forget about it?
I don't think.
Are you, are you projecting, Mr. Chair?
Nobody, nobody seems to be very talkative this morning. I realize jitter bean is closed, but that's our excuse.
I know. I need more coffee. I need more coffee. I'm alive and well.
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to offer a motion.
Good. Go ahead, John.
I moved at the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 19-07 applied for by South Lake Farms on property located at 23492 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, and further described as APN 013-013-111 will not have a significant, significant effect on the environment. And therefore, a mitigative negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated October 202020.
I'll second. Commissioner, Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sinram?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, John.
Sorry, my screen just went.
Yes, brother, John.
I moved at the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 19-07 applied for by South Lake Farms on property located at 23492 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, further described as APNs 013-013-111 does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27, Section 1, subsections 1, 2G, and 1, 2 of the Lake County zoning ordinance and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions. And with the findings listed in the staff report dated October 202020.
I'll second.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinram?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I would like to make the note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. There, if there's a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal with the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Thank you. What are you typing away at over there?
Me?
Oh, her.
No.
Nothing. I'm done now.
Do we have any untimed staff updates? Is I see our boss up there.
Good morning, Scott.
Good morning. I, I, I had my background set from a, a different meeting, so I apologize for that. Actually, maybe I'll just go back there just since we all seem to be in a pretty good mood this morning. So there you go. Good morning. Scott Leleone, Community Development Director. Well, we do have some, some updates and I think I dropped a little bit of a bomb on you last week with the announcement that Kate will be moving to another department in the county. And, and so I'll take a moment to just publicly thank her for all of her work. I, I think I mentioned at the previous meeting that she stepped in with very little training, very little information left behind on how to do her job. And she just frankly took the bull by the horns and, and taught herself how to do it. Created a document for us that she's, she shared with me that will, will be, will provide the basis for training in the future. And I think she's done an excellent job as, as your clerk for the planning commission. And I just want to again, thank her for all of, of her service with CDD and wish her the best and, and great success. And I know that she will do well in her future endeavors. So I, I will turn it over to your commission if you have anything you'd like to say. And I'll also invite, invite Kate to say anything that she would like in, in her parting, her parting statement.
Oh, you want me to go first?
I'd like to say thanks for everything, Kate. And it's nice to know we'll still see you in the building.
Well, I will be, I'm, I'm going to be an analyst for behavioral health. So I'll be based out of Lucerne. And then behavioral health is still mostly remote, so I'll be at home also. But thank you.
Yeah, best of luck.
I've, I've really enjoyed working with you guys and you've definitely been my favorite part of, of this job and.
Of course we have.
I mean, obviously. But thank you for that, Scott. I appreciate it.
Do you want to say nice things about me?
Kate is great. I'm sad to see her go. I'm happy for her at the same time. You know, you, you're very warm and fuzzy and I hope that whoever replaces you is as understanding and patient with me as you have been. So I appreciate that.
Yes, you should.
It will be Trish for a little bit until they find someone else, but Trish will do great.
Excellent.
Sorry, I'm not real big on, on this kind of stuff. So, but anyway, I think you've done a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
And I've appreciated having you working here.
Thank you.
All right. Is that it?
Okay. Well, I, I have some additional news and perhaps.
It's a bigger deal.
Well, I, I got in trouble last week with, with Kate. So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna stay with the, stay with the tradition here. And I'm sad to announce that our principal planner, Mark Roberts, who's there in the chamber with you, has, is going to be taking an opportunity to move on and kind of expand in his career and going to be moving to the city of Clear Lake and, and performing planning work for the city. He's announced that he'll be leaving here at the end of the month. And I, this is also, I guess, would be his last planning commission meeting. And we're sorry to see him go. Mark is a, a longtime employee of the department, has a vast institutional knowledge of, of our history here. And, you know, anytime that you, anytime that you lose somebody with, with that kind of knowledge, it, it's, it's always a struggle to, to recover from that. I'm confident that he'll answer the phone or attached if, if we need some help or some information in the future. But I, I'm also excited for Mark as this is an opportunity for him. And, and, and so I would also like to wish him well and good luck in all of his future endeavors. And I know he will do well.
Absolutely. Mark, sorry to see you go, but congratulations on this next step.
Thank you. And likewise, I've, you've seen me grow from, since 2014, from a, an assistant planner up to the position I'm in now. And we've all been through the, the struggles together to pull together in tough times with the disasters and the chaos of projects. So I, I do appreciate everything everyone has done for me. And I will miss working with you guys, but like you said, Scott, I'm only, only a text or a phone call away and I'll still be around in the, the county.
Thank you, Mark.
So Scott, that being said, with Mark leaving, how do you plan on, I mean, I, you're not replaceable, Mark, by any means. But how do you plan on, you know, spreading the workload and making sure that everything is still running smoothly?
Well, that's a, that is a valid and excellent question. And, you know, the first answer that comes to mind is smoke and mirrors.
We don't need any.
Now, we're gonna.
Or plexiglass? Smoke and plexiglass? I like that.
We're gonna, we're gonna start a recruitment, obviously. And, and I'm hopeful that with the board's recent adoption of the class and compensation and the changes we've had in, in the compensation for our positions, that will, will be attractive to folks. I, I know that we're, we're seeing a lot of interest in positions currently from folks wanting to get out of urban areas. And so we're keeping our fingers crossed that we'll find somebody that, that is looking to get out of the urban area and, and, you know, perhaps slow down a little bit, work a little bit from home and, you know. So, so we're hopeful. In the meantime, we're gonna, we're gonna do like we always do. And that is just kind of hunker down and, and, and just keep, keep grinding and get it done. And, and turn to some of our, our other associates and our other folks like Victor and, and others that are doing a, a great job for us. And we'll just, we're just going to keep grinding. And, you know, it's, it's never a good time to, you know, to, to have employees move on. But as we come into kind of the holiday season and, and we come into winter, we, we, we tend to slow down. Numbers show, history shows that permits, applications tend to slow down at this time of the year. But we still have a, a big backlog of, of, of applications that we'll just continue to work on. So that, that's, that's the best I can do. There's, there's always, I suppose, consultants that, that can be brought in. But that, that to me is, I'm just not sure we're, we're there yet. But that's always, it's always a, something that we can, we can do if we need to. But I'm gonna hope that we don't need it. Yeah.
Have, have you, have you looked at the possibility of reaching out to the community? Perhaps, perhaps getting together some kind of a small group of people from the community, business people from the community who would be willing to spend some time with any new planners that you do bring in, especially from an urban area, to possibly help them become more familiar with how rural Lake County is and, and the many issues that are vastly different than anything, anybody from any rural setting, I mean, any urban setting. setting is familiar with?
Absolutely, that's a, that is a, an excellent idea, and, and we do, we do some, something similar, we've implemented some training, and, and we've implemented some things where we bring in folks from outside of the, the CDD to do presentations to our planners, but we can certainly expand that, and, you know, one of the things that unfortunately that is, is not being done right now is the, oh gosh, the program through California Women for Agriculture, AgVenture. AgVenture is just an outstanding program. I'm proud to say that I was in the inaugural class of, of AgVenture, and-
I've done it too, Scott, it's a great, great program. I learned so much.
Absolutely, and, and so, you know, I was really kind of hoping to send to a car to that, and, and unfortunately, as you know, it's been kind of delayed through, through the COVID pandemic, but, you know, those are, those, we're gonna take advantage of all those types of things, and yes, I appreciate the, the suggestion, that is an outstanding one, to bring in some of our business leaders and, and agricultural leaders and, and other folks from, from industries around the county, that, thank you for that.
I am, I am familiar with that program, but another, another thing would be like from the building industry, you know, especially build, people building houses, you know, contractors, you know, like in the Cobb area, or, you know, kind of, you know, like to take it kind of a tour with somebody familiar with the issues that they deal with on a daily basis, you know, like the whole deal with, wow, can't remember the name of the place down, towards Middletown that mostly burned down, that had to get a whole new sewer system.
Anderson Springs.
Anderson Springs, thank you, John.
Yep.
You know, and, and that's just something that I don't think people from urban areas, they probably wouldn't even be able to grasp, you can sit and talk to them about it, but they probably still wouldn't grasp it without actually going out in the field and, and-
Right.
-seeing firsthand, so.
Yep, yeah, I, I suspect that we may see some folks that don't know what a septic system is, so, those are all, those are all-
Or cesspool.
Things that we can certainly teach them, so thank you for that suggestion.
Scott, any progress on identifying or hiring someone for your cannabis division?
Well, we have a, a lot of interest in that. We, the, the recruitment is still open, I think it's got another couple weeks to go. We sent it out to some agencies out of state, you know, Colorado was one of the first states to, to really move on cannabis, so we sent it to the, to a, a planning organization in, in Colorado. So, we've got it spread, got the advertisement spread out pretty far, the latest number that I heard, and it's been probably at least a week since we checked in, we had seventeen applicants for the, for the position, so we're seeing a lot of interest in that, pretty excited about it, and, and so we'll, we'll jump on that just as soon as the rec, the recruitment closes.
Excellent. I know you have a lot going on, Scott, you're doing a great job.
Oh, thank you. It's a, it's a team effort, we're, we're, yeah, it's, we're, we're getting there, we'll get, we'll get it, but thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Welcome.
Okay, not seeing any more, I guess we'll go ahead and adjourn. Would you may like to entertain a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, if there's no opposition, I'll call it adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good luck, Kate, good luck, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you.